All right, new business, item number six. Planing director initiated. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If it's all right with the planning commission, staff would like to do a combined presentation of item six and seven since they're directly related to each other. And then when the commission votes, if they could take the motions separately.
Any objections?
Okay, so the first item, item six, is the planning director initiated action asking the commission to assess condition compliance of use permit 1234. This permit was issued in 2012 to Regency South Incorporated. The property is located in a south Hilo district, up in the Kamana area of Hilo. You can see the property outlined in red. And just to orient the commission, we have the Mahouli Street Extension and Anako Avenue crossing the top of the slide. And then Kamana Drive heading up towards Saddle Road, crossing in the opposite direction here. So the property is located just mackay of Kamana Drive. And I think a lot of the commissioners that are still here voted on this application in 2012, so I may be repeating a lot of information about it. The zone of the property is single-family residential, 15,000 square feet as well as 10,000 square feet. So it's a split-zone lot. So the reason for this action is that on February 28th of this year, the planning department received a complaint. The complaint alleged violation of three of the conditions of the permit. Condition four, the complaint alleged that the applicant wasn't providing landscaping, but the complaint was vague as to what type of landscaping they weren't providing. And condition eight, the complaint alleged that the applicant had restarted vertical construction of the buildings on site prior to completing or prior to improvements on Kamana Drive being completed. And then condition nine, the complaint alleged that the applicant has not complied with with condition nine as it relates to installing smart sign traffic control devices on Kamana Drive. This is a photograph. So once the planning department received the complaint, staff went to the property and did indeed verify that vertical walls were being constructed on the property, as you can see in the picture. Here's another photo of active construction on site. The walls are already constructed but laid flat in this photo. And then these are photos of Kamana Drive to show that the applicant had started construction of the access improvements, but they weren't completed. And they were supposed to be completed before starting the vertical construction on site. So this is a view of Kamana Drive looking down towards Hilo Town. And this is a view of Kamana Drive looking up towards, if you're going towards Saddle Road. And the property would be on the left side in this photo. In this photo, the driveway is located on the right side in this area here. So the planning director is recommending various options. We've offered a few options in our recommendation report that the commission can consider for each of these alleged violations of conditions. That can include corrective action. If there is corrective action, that can be done, or it can be the assessment of fines. And I'd like to come back to that. Maybe you could call if the applicant listened to what they have to say and also any testimony. And then the department can help you inform you what type of action you want to take. So that concludes that item of presentation. So as a result of the complaint, as a result of the department going out and doing a site inspection and seeing that they had started vertical construction, Regency South submitted an amendment request to amend condition eight. And that amendment request was to allow them to do concurrent construction on site while they're doing improvements to the Kamana Drive access. So the current condition eight says that they need to do complete Kamana Drive improvements, the very long condition, prior to construction of any vertical component. The applicant is now requesting to change that to concurrent with the start of construction of a vertical component of any structure on the property the applicant shall undertake the Kamana Drive improvements. The reasons that they've submitted the request is because they have said that they're falling behind schedule due to weather delays, additional work completed at the request of neighbors, and additional utility work. As I mentioned before, currently their roadwork is underway, but the building, construction of the building itself has fallen significantly behind the schedule. For the amendment request, the planning director is recommending approval to allow concurrent construction. We are also recommending the condition be amended to require that they complete the Kamana Drive improvements prior to occupying the care home facility. And that was at the request of Department of Public Works. So I just want to also bring your attention to a packet of information you received this morning. This is from the Luana Gardens Subdivision Community Association. And that's the only additional testimony we've received since you received your background and recommendation reports. I also want to let the commission know that there is a representative in the Department of Public Works Traffic Division here, Mr. Ron Field, and he can answer any questions you may have related to traffic or safety on Kamana Drive. That concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Maya, yeah, I just, I wanted to comment. I don't, in my opinion, the, your presentation didn't present an accurate picture of that entranceway. Because, I mean, you showed the roadway, but you didn't show how steeply it falls off to the project site. It's the problems of the hillside and all the traffic is compounded by the steep grade of the property being worked on. And I think it makes it a little more dangerous than it appears to.
Okay, this, this is just a photo. I guess I could have taken the photo from a different direction, but it's my understanding that because the applicant is doing improvements to widen Kamana Drive on this curve, they're actually building up the roadway a bit, oops, on this side of their property. And they can probably explain that a little bit more. So I'm not certain what fill they brought in to kind of level out and build up the entire driveway area, but I knew, I know that they are filling in this area here to widen Kamana Drive.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, uh, can I assume that the first complaint about landscaping, because it's vague, we're gonna ignore that complaint?
Yeah, that complaint has already been resolved. They were assessed a $500 fine for basically cutting down most of the trees on the property during Hawaiian hot breeding season, which was one of your conditions, that they not do that. So that complaint has already been resolved.
And the other concern that I have is, I would assume that the Kamana Drive improvement, the need to have that completed before they did the vertical structures so that the materials and whatever would have an easier time getting into the development. So doing it concurrently as you're recommending would place a heavier traffic burden on the existing Kamana today because the improvement had not taken place.
When you say the improvement, you mean the Kamana Drive improvement?
Yes.
The condition was included in the permit originally because an agreement was worked out between the Luana Gardens Community Association and the applicant. The community association had concern that a lot of truck traffic would be going in and out of the driveway access. So this was an agreement those two parties had come to. Yeah, they, they had asked for, the applicant had asked that site work could be done while improvements to Kamana Drive were being constructed. So you know, grading, grubbing, leveling the pad, but not actual vertical construction. Because the assumption was that that would bring in more traffic. You'd have more contractor workers coming in compared to as if you were just having like a grading equipment on site. So that was the reason for the condition at the beginning. Now, whether or not there are traffic concerns or safety concerns because more traffic may be generated, the acting Department of Public Works should respond to that.
Okay, I live on that further up, but I live on that, and I can already see problems with the traffic. So I guess what I'm asking is that if you do it concurrently if the road is not complete, you will have more traffic traffic. Because you're doing things concurrently. So the original recommendation of having the Kamana Drive go completed first makes sense to me. But as an association, say, doing government, I guess my, my problems might have compared to that. So, okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Can I be close paper now? Like to call up the applicant. Very comfortable today for the, with the planning commission? And we have Mr. Brownfield.
Good morning, Chair and fellow commissioners. William Brownfield on behalf of the Community Board Planning Department, Deputy Corporation Counsel, along with the planning director, Mr. Doy Kanua. I think the reason we came forward is because if you look at the matters in front of us, item number six was actually used to provide the planning director for that part, you know. I think we have to kind of, we're hoping to keep the record clear as to, you know, discussion regarding item number six as well as item number seven. Although, you know, they pertain to the same project, they're, you know, two separate and individual requests. So therefore, we're wanting to just, you know, keep the record clear.
Very good. And if anybody wants to sign up to testify, go see Sarah over there. I have one person signed up, but there's a lot of people here. So if you want to testify, please see Sarah. Okay, Sarah.
Hi, yeah, my name is David. I reside in the home of Washington. And we're here primarily not for reasons, fairly recently, but to discuss the condition eight request for an amendment to that condition. I acknowledge and certainly apologize for the fact that we did overlap the violation of the requirement to not begin vertical construction. Between scheduling constraints, permitting constraints, we just ended up in a position where we had to keep going. We have, you know, 30 to 40 people on site. It would have necessitated waiting everyone off, stopping progress. And these projects are like a big train. Once we get going, it's, it's hard to stop them along the way. We certainly underestimated the time we paid to get through the process to begin the approval of the road improvements. And, you know, once that was initiated, we began those improvements. At this point, there's a significant portion of it done. We're still delaying with some of the utilities and relocation of poles. But in large part, that work should be wrapped up shortly. You know, I do apologize for the fact that we did violate that particular portion of the agreement. And there's nothing more I can say about that. I do ask that you allow us to continue this project. We're providing a number of jobs now. It's gonna provide 150 jobs, hopefully starting later in summer. And, you know, we want to be able to continue this process. We certainly didn't want to end it.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you very much, Chair. Just to give some additional background information as to why this matter is in front of the commission, you know, today. Basically, use permit number 120034 afforded the applicant opportunity to move forward with their use permit. However, there was a condition number eight that stated, and I'm just paraphrasing that, prior to vertical construction of the project taking place, the connection, the connector road between the project and Kamana Drive needed to be finalized due to the potential or, or the possibility of, you know, congestion and maybe some safety hazards on Kamana Drive. So the project was, you know, the permit was approved and went forward. Subsequent to that, and what got us here today, was the planning department received numerous complaints from neighbors and various individuals regarding the fact that, you know, vertical construction had initiated on the project without the connection to Kamana Drive, that road being finalized. And therefore, you know, based on the complaints, the planning department sent out, you know, representative of personnel to inspect. And indeed, there was a violation confirmed that, you know, vertical construction was taking place and the connection to Kamana Drive had not been finalized. Therefore, pursuant to the language of the use permit, the planning director initiated a violation notice to the planning permission request that this matter be brought forward. And that's why we're pursuing it here today. And so if you have any specific questions regarding the violation, we'd be happy to address those.
Questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a little more clarification. Normally, we would be able to pursue administratively, administratively, administratively pursue violations of conditions. But since this, this permit and the conditions attached, they are two issued by the commission, our only recourse is to bring it back to the commission for the commission to, to, um, rule on whether or not they felt it was a violation of their, their condition. As we see as we move through the process, we're also suggesting a condition, a standard condition for these kinds of applications that come before the commission to authorize, and the commission authorizes the department to pursue, you know, any violation of your conditions. Because without something like that, every application that has a potential or an alleged violation, our only recourse is to bring it back to the commission. So, you know, that kind of sets a stage for where we are now. And in the process of that, the applicant is coming for an amendment, which is separate, but it's remaining while we're here.
So, you, yeah, go ahead.
We'd like to hear from the road department, Department of Transportation also. But first, before we leave, what was the, what kind of penalty do you maybe, can we render to the developer for violating some of the conditions?
For violations, the department has criteria and rules for what those are. But that's for...
That's what you're asking for, that you have that latitude to correct?
The commission itself doesn't have, you know, any standard. And, and so, you know, that's why if monetary fines issued because of confirmed violations, we couldn't issue them because it's still ongoing. So that's why we're trying to close that, you know, officially close that gap so that we'll be able to pursue it. And if, on a case-by-case basis, if it's severe enough where it can't be resolved by monetary fines or other stop move kind of practices, then we'll bring it back to the commission for the commission to actually take action on it all.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I have a question for that. You said the road improvement portion will be done very soon. What is very soon?
Okay, I have the contractor here. I have the contractor here. If I could confer with him for a moment, I could probably give him more exact answers.
While we're doing that, so your, your amendment closes that gap that we're talking about here as we approve your makeup. Does that, can I turn it back over?
What we're requesting is that the matter, you know, if the commission sees there's a violation, we send to the road department, the commission can really do it, is rescind, rescind the original program. So what we're requesting, what the planning director is requesting, that if there is a violation, it takes to be sent back to the permanent department of planning departments for assessment of standard fines that ordinarily would be imposed on, like violations.
So an approval of this will, will do that?
That's what we're requesting. Thank you.
Okay, answered your question. There's a couple of things that are outside of our control. We have a utility pole that sits what now, what is now within the roadway that has both the Hawaiian electric and the telephone companies' wires attached to it. So the best estimate right now is the pole is about ready to be removed. 30 to 60 days, I would say 90 days if we're wanting to be safe. But it really relates more to the relocation of the pole. The rest of the work itself is gonna be done fairly rapidly. But that utility piece is way outside our control.
Okay, thank you.
Question. The improvement on the roadway, the development on the Kamana Drive, is that a state, a county's project or is that your personal project?
The work that's being done on the roadway, we're, we're doing that as part of the, as part of the improvement.
For the company?
Yes.
Well, I guess I have a concern because I live in that area at night. I don't know if this is a personal request, but anyway, coming up at night, coming up on Kamana, the barriers, you're supposed to have those flashing lights, they don't work. So that as I'm coming up, if I'm not careful, I'm hitting one of those plastic barriers because the lights don't function that well.
Our, our general contractor is here and is hearing that as well. I will discuss that with them.
But that I'm asking there, is that a responsibility of the county, the state, or personally?
It would be the, the roadway improvement contractor who's actually doing the work.
Thank you.
And I believe there are standards for that traffic control setup as well. And they, they should be complying with those. If we're not, then they should.
I guess it's not, I don't want to carry this in front of them. It's just that those lights are not, it's thin. So that as you drive, you can't get...
I understand.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think Commissioner Shimashima asked for my work.
You ready for that? We could get, Mr. Deel?
I'm Ron Field, Chief of the Traffic Division, representing Public Works today for this matter.
Would you raise your hand if I could, sir? You swear to tell truth before the planning commission today?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Chair, finish that.
Thank you. Construction and the dynamics in construction, we know the timing came off, or whatever, be it, be it weather or dealing, or whatever. And a lot of this looks like a lot of contract to be controlled. But on the, on the current conditions now with the vertical walls going up and traffic, I sort of, we are going to start in this complaint and the traffic increased because of vertical going up. So I don't even ask you, you have the answers to that. But we need our ten and so forth. It's what I'm concerned with. The vertical going up and that did increase the traffic.
So from the traffic division point of view, we don't require restriction during construction. We'd really like to have everything done before certificate occupancy is given. But in this case, I'd really be looking back on it and see why there were concerns about this particular project for two reasons. One, the restricted site distance on the inside of the curb at that location, and also the steep drop-off into the facility. And when I went out there a few weeks ago, the inside curb had been constructed, moved back, and increased the site distance. So that has been taken care of. And the entrance into the facility itself had been raised up to grade. During the plan review, we requested the engineer to raise that intersection up at a very high, more, more than what you normally see in order to get intersection site distance on both, both directions. And all that has been done, the vertical construction has been done. We do have a problem with the utilities and they can't open up the additional lane, the auxiliary lane. But most of the things that you normally would be looking for to make this a safer intersection has already been done. And so on that basis, I still would say I wouldn't request restriction on the vertical construction until the rest of this road and production is...
Thank you. Sir, would you repeat the last statement? Would you repeat your last statement about your commitment?
Well, basically, I would say that I wouldn't ask that it's necessary to restrict the vertical construction because the majority of the work has been done and all of the issues that I have been concerned about have been taken care of. And that being the site distance.
Any other questions, Mr. Deel?
A question for, if I will. You, between the vertical and part of the condition, you try to have concurrent working with the road entrance and the vertical. You have a crew working there now. Are they parking all on the side of your vertical?
Yes, yes. Yes, there's, there's a tremendous amount of parking on the site now. Most of the major grading and playouts have been done. There's lots of area to park there.
So all your labor is parked there?
On the side, yes.
And... delivery of materials?
All, all onto the side.
All on the side?
Everything is on the side. The only thing you see right now, you did see over the last couple of days, Elko, and of course, the work that's being wrapped up on the road, sales titles, contractors. But the folks working down on the site are down on the site. And it's a significant business now.
Commissioner Nicole?
I haven't been by the site, you know, during peak traffic hours when it's probably, it's most... probably, it's most congested. And so I don't know, are there, are there humans there directly helping direct traffic, or is that something that would help mitigate it? If they're not, it would be?
No, I, I certainly haven't been there on an ongoing basis. I know there are traffic control standards and certainly I would expect the contractor on the site would be adhering to those traffic control standards as the, the work goes on. So I, I have to defer to them and, uh, to the department as far as what means and mitigations are being done.
You don't know?
I don't, uh, I, I, I couldn't answer that with, uh, oh.
But maybe, uh?
I, I can certainly help the contractor.
I'm sure, uh, since he was up there, I, I didn't, do they have people, black guys up there?
Mr. Field. Uh, Mr. Field, in hindsight, I can see, maybe, I had a, uh, when you get the approval
to, to do this kind of a development with the various departments, aren't the utilities also informed that this is gonna be taking place so that you may need to remove these, these poles? I mean, ninety days beyond the plan time, it's hard for me to accept in terms of?
It's, it's hard for me to accept too. Um, but, but in fact, uh, we've been in contact with the utilities, uh, for the better part of two years. And we have been working with them on an ongoing basis. So it, it's just, it's a process and I understand that, um, their timing is, is what their timing is. But, but in fact, it's not for a, a lack of communication. It's just that there's a process that goes on that, uh, takes time on their part. And, and we have no control over that.
No, I understand that, but it seems as though...
We're on the same page.
Any other questions? Here's the contractor. Sir, could I get you to raise your right hand, please? You swear to tell the truth before the planning commission today?
Right.
Could you state your name?
Oh, Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, all right. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wilson, or do you have a statement, sir?
I, I have a question, or at least an observation on my part. Um, I disagree with you in that I do see cars, see that as part of the expanded roadway. It's not paved right now, but it's, it's been graded. So that all, I'm not sure that they're workers' cars, but in the past, no cars were parked along Kamana Drive. I do see cars now parked where it's not paved, but it has expanded. So I, I, I guess I disagree in that I think you have workers' cars parked along Kamana Drive. I'm, I cannot identify the cars, nor do I know the owners. I'm just saying that there were, there are a couple of cars parked almost vague in the expanded area. As you go up Kamana Drive, where there's that rock wall, that retaining wall that was built, along there, I do see a couple, two, three cars parked there quite often. So I disagree with them in terms of all workers' cars are not, are done, fine, no, no.
Correct. Uh, I spend most of my time at the bottom, but, uh, we have a subcontractor, a local subcontractor doing all the, the work up on the rightaway, as we call it. Now, there is equipment up there and there is, uh, their pickup trucks that have their tools in them. But, uh, for the most part, they had to widen the road. It was, uh, they started that first, so that's been about two months ago. So there have been small equipment on that side of the road. Two days ago, they, uh, they put a, a lid on the drain that's over there. So they'll, they'll, the rails you're talking about that aren't, aren't wet, that rail is actually going to be driven on. So the, the barriers were approaching. That's why they were the, uh, the big delineators that they put there. But those should go away, I would say, within the end of this week. They're just gonna come back in and pave that mountain side, and that will be wider. Uh, but I'm not sure, the traffic, I, I, I think the vehicles you're talking about were the cement trucks for the retaining walls. But there shouldn't be anybody parked on, on the side of the road here that I'm aware of. They did stripe, temporary striped white line on one in there.
Was there a red seat dance or small trucks?
Pardon?
There were red seat dance or small trucks and pickup trucks.
I do have, uh, do you, do you know what time of day that would be?
No, I'm sorry, go off the mountain, something else.
There, there are, uh, probably housewives dropping their husbands off. I would say that maybe that's what's happening now. All, all my crew, they, they come to work and they, they drive down, they drive down, they help. But I will, uh, I will get to the bottom of the, uh, whoever's parking up there. I, I'm not aware of it. Because Wilkes has that whole rightaway to work in. And people parked there leaving their vehicle there would just be a nuisance for them.
No, I, maybe I'm not, it's not the area that's repaved on the, uh, the curving. It's on the other side where you had built a, uh, rock retaining wall on the other side of Kamana Drive.
I don't know what.
You kind of, you kind of cleared, you kind of, uh, excavated several properties on the other side of?
Yes, we did.
Yes, on the, the far end, you, you built one with a retaining wall.
Correct.
That area, I saw two to three cars parked in that place.
Oh, that, that's, that's private property, uh?
No, it's not.
That's out of our control where they, then that retaining wall, uh, that's?
No, but it's parked on the outside of the retaining wall. It's not parked on the inside. So it has to be not part of private property. It's gonna be part of the road, we are almost sure.
Um, I would say we should probably investigate and see if, if, if those are, uh, part of the work, and then they'll address that issue. And I, that's the best way we could answer that question at this point.
Anybody else have any questions for, ladies and gentlemen up there? Okay, we're gonna do public testimony, but we're gonna take a quick, uh, just a five-minute break. Sorry, I'm gonna change your tables. Okay, uh, we'd like to call up Don McKell, Alvin Yamati, Roger Antonio, and Elizabeth Martin. Please come on up and have a seat. Are the other two here?
The bathroom. Bathroom. Press for me, press for me.
Okay, so just a little bit now.
Now.
A little bit.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Yamati, there you go. Come on up.
Just in a minute.
Okay, we'll get to Ms. Martin in a moment. Could I get you, uh, ladies and gentlemen, please raise your right hands. Do you swear to test to tell the truth today before the Winver Planning Commission?
Thank you.
Uh, we'll go ahead. I guess we can start over here. State your name, where you reside, and then you will have three minutes. And then please try to keep to the three minutes.
Thank you.
My name is Roger Antonio. My name is, uh, I need to, uh, wait. My concern is really, we're having this meeting here for nothing because the guys, they're all vertical, they're going up, they're not, they, they're just going against the rules that they, uh, you know, they, they said they was gonna do. They're doing what they wanna do. A hundred dollar fine for doing something. These guys, they're fined a hundred million dollars. They've learned, they've learned what to do right. They agreed to, to what the civil is gonna do. And now they're just, they're not being good neighbors. They're doing what they wanna do. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Any, uh, any questions for them? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Don Frisano. Initially, I was gonna get up and speak for the Luana Gardens subdivision. But as you can see, these people are sitting here now wanting to tell us about what it means here. Okay, so as soon as the listeners get here, they can go through this. So I just wanted to give you a little background of our association. Luana Gardens subdivision was created in the late seventies. They were formed in, in two thousand. But we go back farther than that. We go back to Kitty High subdivision before the war in the nineteen forties. Matter of fact, we still have one member who is still a member of our association, Albert, uh, Inaki Har. He's still part of our, our association. Uh, after that, uh, Kitty High subdivision, then it became Mameki Kumiai in the seventies, eighties, and nineties. For some reason, they kind of figured it out, so we ended up again in two thousand. And we reported, uh, also, uh, the reason why we decided to come here. I think the folks in the year two thousand supporting the program and supporting what they, what, what we self want to do. I believe Mr. Olo had mentioned something that we had agreed with them. It's not so much that we agreed with them. We came up with a proposal. I think you folks have it in front of you. Those are the concerns that we first came up with. And what we shared at that time was build a road first. And everybody looked at us and said, oh, well, no, we can do both at the same time, this and that, this and that. Okay? So we reluctantly went along with their litigation for both. It's not that we agreed to the thing, had to say, okay? So we went along with it. But because of what they were saying to us, we went along with it. We have not had nothing but problems from day one. Okay, number one, uh, when we asked that they leave a vegetation buffer between us and the development, you know what they did? Both came in and went, everything up, everything. So where's the buffer? Where's the twenty feet? We wanted indigenous trees to be left, laid out there under brush of invasion region to, and leave the indigenous trees there as a buffer. That didn't happen. Just wipe it up. Okay, as far as, excuse me, as far as the, uh, violation, I don't think that we should allow them to keep building and violating the use purpose. They should be stopped from building anything vertical until that road is completed and turned over to the county. And give them control.
Oh, I, uh, Melry Mathieu. Um, our problem that was mentioned is that people tend to speed coming down from Kamana and, uh, down to, yeah, Au Kuniai. And I think that the, uh, speed signs is, uh, they're a fire. Our problem is that, uh, several, this was built probably in nineteen thirties, Kamana Drive, this part. During that time, in, uh, from, uh, the, the old days like that, those, uh, roads were all, you know, those, up and down, the river was terrible like that. And it's slow enough with the, uh, Apola roads, the love to Apola. That improvement was made in nineteen thirties in page straight. And that road remains the same, okay? And, uh, drivers tend to, uh, speed, the upper Kamana Drive tends to speed. So, uh, when we, oh, sure. Anyway, uh, upper Kamana drivers tend to speed. It's a concern of us trying to get to Kamana Drive. So, uh, anyway, I think the, the several was built in nineteen thirties. I think, uh, cars were invented by. Anyway, the, uh, roads tend to follow the name of the land, you know? And then, uh, um, there's poor line of sight. Yeah. So what we want to do is slow down the traffic so we can safely get to the side of several, uh, sub, uh, several, oh, to Kamana Drive. Then, um, we have to, the cars coming around from one corner, from, from off the side, we have to speed just to get to the road. There's, there's lines in the side you cannot see. So what I was, uh, thinking is to, uh, improve the road. That would be costly to do any improvement that was done in Philo, Okavu. Those are all downers. But we probably have to live with Kamana Drive facilities because it would be too costly for Kamia Koi, uh, to improve. So what I, what we were asking the, uh, Virgin City South of, uh, proving, making the road safer for us together by putting smart lights. And this thing wasn't, I'm surprised it wasn't mentioned, okay, by anyone. And then we figured if the place, you know, where, uh, instead of turning miles, I think we should bring it up to twenty-five. We can let it allow to maybe about thirty miles, uh, from Ainako to, uh, Au Kuniai. But the, it acted, I think, lasted all twenty-five miles per hour. Uh, so the, uh, update is that when you go into a curvier, studying the, uh, highways like that in the, in the, uh, roads, in the county roads, should supposedly be twenty-five miles if you have a road like this. And that's, now, if there were a road, uh, Kamana Road coming this way, one is up and one is down, uh, going to the project site, they have it at thirty miles per hour. And that's where I get really nervous. So, uh, you also, I don't know how you can conference. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like a reminder about how much time is allotted to each speaker.
Yeah, you're, you're allowed three minutes, but you all signed up for two, so if you, if you're a little bit extra.
I need you a little bit more.
Now, I need you, ma'am, I need you to raise your right hand for me.
Okay.
You swear to tell the truth today to the Winver Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you. State your name, please.
My name is Elizabeth Martin, and I've been a resident of Luana Gardens for twenty-two years. Shall I proceed? Today, I am taking a very firm stand that Regency South should honor their agreement that they would fix the road first before building. And here are my reasons, which I think are compelling. It's primarily for safety and prevention. There is a preschool located on the corner of Kamana Drive and Ainako Avenue. There is also an elementary school. That means school buses go by in the morning and in the afternoon. And even under optimal conditions before any building was going on, Kamana Drive is a very narrow, winding road, and one has to have extreme caution. And I'll just describe what traffic is like now. I go there every day, sometimes twice a day. There are big orange signs that say roadwork under construction. And there are poles and orange, uh, orange construction thing. And you feel like you're going through an obstacle course. It's a two-way highway. And I am so thankful there are cars ahead of me so they can see whether, and then when they have the... And I am so thankful there are cars ahead of me so they can see whether, and when they have the signals, they have, one worker come up with a slow sign, but it's not a conspicuous sign. And then when you can go, they have, no, first they have a slow and then they have a stop. And then they motion which way we can go. So, and there are people who used to walk on Calamaa Drive, but there are signs that say sidewalks are closed. So while one has to do extreme cautious driving in regular circumstances, and I travel senior hours, it's even more extremely challenging to drive now. And so I take the firm stance, just to summarize, for the safety of the children, for the safety of the residents, for the safety of the drivers who commute from Hilo to Kona via the Saddle Road. I think that Region C South should honor their promise that for the sake of safety, that they would do the road first and then proceed. And, and then we'll give them a warm aloha.
Thank you. Uh, oh, we have it, this is.
Did you need my age?
I brought a bar, you look like you're twenty.
I'm eighty years old.
Any questions for any of the, are people up here?
Hi, you are asking what compensation you want for it? Yeah. Install smart lights for us. That's all you ask, maybe it's.
Actually Maya had mentioned smart lights too.
No, let me clarify something just because.
Yes, sir.
In the beginning, when this project went through, and excuse me if I'm having a hard time, but actually, I'm not supposed to be here. I had my third stroke and I'm supposed to play the role, but I'm still good. Anyway, initially, that was the, that was the response from Public Works when we started. That smart signs would be included, okay? Mr. Pyle, who represents Region C South, came out with an email on December 20th. Do you have copies of it? That said that they weren't going to do it because a person or persons on Calamaa Drive don't want red blinking lights in their front yard. I went to the five smart signs in Hilo. I talked to every person that is right next to the signs. He said it doesn't flash or blink into their, into their houses at night. So for them to tell us that they're going to do that and then they on their own, I believe it's not their position to turn it down. I think if Public Works is saying that it should be put in, then it should be put in. They don't have an option to say, well, one person is saying they don't want it, so we shouldn't have it. We're forty household, we're saying yes, put it in because that is the only thing left for us. In the beginning, we asked for a stop light, it was hit. No. We asked for a three-way stop, it was hit. And to clarify Mel's position, the speed limit over there is 35 miles an hour, okay? We asked for the reduction, they said no. So the only thing that was left for us, for the safety of that roadway, was the smart sign. But here, Region C South states the position that they're not going to put it in because one person doesn't want it.
Thank you, Mr. Murchet. I think we can all be seated. Thank you for coming forward.
I have one more. You know, Mr. Karual and Mr. Bilhanti is saying that they need to come back to you folks to get permission to enforce. I worked for the state for 20 years. I worked for the Department of Education. I worked for Department of Land and Natural Resources, and I worked for More Homes. If I'm not mistaken, you, the board, and other commissioners set the policy. It is the department that carries it out. So I don't see why the department could not stop and join them the moment they violated the permit the second time. I don't know why it has to come back here. Maybe I'm misunderstanding of how the rule is. And maybe making clarify further with me. Because as far as I know, we have always, as a department, enforced the policies that you, the commissioner or board set up. So that's just another comment and all. I don't see as to why it has to come back over here if they're violating it. Thank you.
We'll see if we can get to it.
One more comment, then I'll.
Yes, sir.
Last week, when I turned in complaint form, and I'm saying this because I have a cousin whose husband works on the project. He bumped into me and he said, oh, by the way, somebody went rat us out. I said, what do you say, what do you mean? Oh, the big boss said somebody went rat him out. I said, no. I said, a complaint was lost. I'm not a rat, I'm a complainant. If I see that a violation has been done, I want to say so. And so, you know, they kept telling the workers, no, as long as they start something on the road, they can do whatever they want. And I don't think, if, if you look at the testimony that I gave, they reiterated once, two, three, four times that they would do the road first, or finish the road and then do the vertical. And I would have some respect for Region C South. If they came in front of you, stop the work when Maya went up there the second time. Ask for them and then proceed, but no, they keep building. They're building every morning. And they keep doing it, and it's like saying, the permit doesn't matter, you don't matter, or the community doesn't matter. And so I really feel strongly that they should be stopped immediately, that some sort of fines should be addressed, and they should stop the construction vertical and building, complete the road. Thank you.
I don't think that's applicable, would you like to respond to it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and can we please talk about last event?
I'll be brief. Relative to the concern about the smart signs, we don't care one way or the other where we put smart signs in or not. If we left that decision to the engineers, to Department of Public Works, it certainly would have been a much cheaper option for us to have just dealt with that issue and put smart signs in rather than doing the wiping, the control measures that are going to be implemented on that road in order to straighten out and increase the site distance. We, as well as some of the property owners, gave up property in order to be able to straighten out that roadway and improve the site distance. We still don't care about the smart sign issue. If, if a decision was made to install those, we'd be happy to go ahead and do that. But we don't make the decisions relative to what happens with the road sign. I've got the end here, who is with the civil injury firm that worked with the road department and came up with a design that they now are using. So, and if you'd like to ask you any questions regarding about that, please do.
Would a temporary stoplight, like they have on the, you know, some of the bridge work on Alcoa side, be effective in mitigating some of the traffic problem?
My name is Yan Yanlin, I'm with Engineering Partners.
Do you swear to tell the truth before the plan commission today?
I do.
Thank you.
Probably it will be, be good, but, you know, that type of measure will definitely cause an even bigger congestion because it's going to back up cars when you have, actually, have a light. Because a traffic officer there can see how many cars are coming and changing the baration a lot quicker than a, a, just something on a timer.
Hi, Mr. Nicolai. I remember when this came before us the first time and I, you know, we told Mr. Thiel you could go home, but I almost want to say I remember. He said it was a little too steep coming down the hill with the light there. Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen? It's nice to hear you're not opposed to the smart signs. Thank you. Mr. Ryan, where am I going with this now?
I think the best way to handle this is, you heard from the applicant, you heard from the community, you heard from Public Works. And now it's time to probably deal with each item individually. First and foremost, the compliance issue. And once you determine the compliance issue and any, any measures that you feel is appropriate to the non-compliance, then you can address the amendment as well. And as, as Maya mentioned to you, the director has offered to you some options that you consider. So consider those options, and the one you think is appropriate is the one you can bring forward or consider.
Could I call the planning director to consult back up on the time? Please. Thank you. Just Mr. Bilhanti, if you could summarize it up. What if we, if we approve this?
Confident.
I know it's all right here in front of you, but could you just help, help us understand what they were approving?
Okay, morning chair, or is it, oh, most afternoon. Which I think I still keep in under the deadline, a good morning chair. At this time, as it relates to condition number six, the planning department, the planning director's recommendation is, specific to item number four, was to make a determination whether the mangroves were retained on the property along the Luana Gardens subdivision lots by again asking the applicants and or having planning department staff conduct an investigation. As it relates to item number eight, is to, um, regarding the vertical construction, I think there's insufficient enough information, as well as admission by the applicant, that vertical construction has initiated in violation of condition number eight, prohibition against vertical construction until such time as the Calamaa Drive intersection was completed. Then as related to condition number nine, that, that we wanted to add additional language to the general conditions that says the planning commission authorizes the planning director to take immediate action to enforce the conditions of the permit within the authority granted in the zoning code and planning department rule nine. And also, we request that this item, the matter, the violation, be remanded back to the planning department so that appropriate fines may be imposed pursuant to the planning department's finding protocol as it relates to the position of administrative fines.
Any questions, is that here, all the commissioners?
On that last condition, number nine, that would set a amendment to the rule, you know, not just for this particular application.
Unfortunately, due to sunshine law constraints, we can't have that discussion now as to whether or not it can apply to other applications. But I think if we put it in, if you authorize the amendment to condition nine as we recommend it now, if future violations specific to this project occurred, then the planning department would have the authority to enforce the violations, the corrective action as it related to the violations.
Mr. Chairman. My name is Commissioner Isar. If the Commission sees fit to include this specific language in the, um, in this, uh, application, through this amendment that they requested, then to me and to staff, it gives us an indication of a standard condition that will be reinforced in the mission for the applications of this stuff.
Mr. Chair. May I clarify one thing that's being discussed related to page six of our background report? Condition nine is actually related to the traffic control devices. The language that Mr. Bilhanti and the director were referring to adding is just the last paragraph at the bottom of page six. And that is just another condition we would want added on to the permit. So as far as the traffic control devices go, for condition nine, the planning commission could amend the condition to require installation of a sign at a specific point in time or leave the condition as it is, open-ended, to have Department of Public Works determine when those smart signs should be installed.
So an approval of this, who, who puts this to the side if we approve this? When and if for them to do smart signs?
Okay, um, for item six, the non-compliance issue, it, it wouldn't be an approval. The commission needs to decide based on what we're recommending, what action it wants to take. So there's no approval or denial.
Is item four being directed to the director or you?
That's up to you to give the authority to the director to decide. But it's the commission that must take action on the non-compliance issue. For item seven, which is a separate item where the applicant requested the amendment just to condition eight, that would be an approval or denial of their request to amend the permit.
What kind of stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
So we give you like a menu of options, basically, for item number six to choose from.
Thank you. Question for staff, Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Paul? Clarify, please. The staff, the smart signs, those are the.
Traffic.
Control devices.
So if that is approved or recommended by the commission, does that eliminate the workers that do the stop and stop sign?
I don't believe so. Public Works can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the smart signs are a prominent fixture. It's a pole that's placed on both sides, both directions will come on a drive. And I don't know if you've seen the, the smart signs on Kukual Street, but it basically is a sign that displays what speed you're traveling at. And then it has the speed limit sign right next to it so that the driver can see whether they're going above or below the speed limit.
But how does that direct traffic?
It, it's not a, a traffic direction sign. It's meant for making the driver aware of their speed and reducing speed. It's meant for making the driver aware of their speed and reducing speed, which is why it's meant as a permanent fixture during ongoing, ongoing operations of the facility.
Would that sign be necessary once the road is completed?
Um, that's the intent.
Chair, if I would, this, just for, you know, clarification, as condition nine currently read says, "The applicant shall be responsible for the design, purchase, installation of streetlights and traffic control devices, which may include but not limited to smart signs, as may be required by the traffic division, Department of Public Works." So I think that, that even of itself seems pretty clear as to what the requirements, you know, should be for the applicant as it moves forward. You know, they'll be in, in communication with Public Works and, you know, Public Works are, traffic division engineers are deemed to be the expert in the area. I think that allowing them to make determination regarding what type of signs shall be necessary is appropriate.
Okay. So Mr. Brahant, do you think that the traffic division, the Department of Public Works, you would recommend smart signs?
I think you'd have to ask Mr. Thiel.
Oh, I thought we had, oh. Mr. Thiel, you want to come back up for a second? I just, I, I need, you know, I, I feel bad if we approve this, we all walk away and then someone decides they run this. Do you believe you're already sworn in? Mr. Thiel, do you, do you think you would recommend, uh, smart signs, at least during the construction phase?
I pause because everybody thinks that you can put up something that controls all the traffic all the time. And the smart signs started out what I call being a friendly reminder to people. There's no, uh, enforcement. It's just a friendly reminder, and it starts blinking when it gets above the speed limit. It's a solid color when it's at the speed limit or below. I've heard, uh, I have about maybe forty of them on the island, and I've heard, uh, some people swear by them and other people swear at them. I have documentation showing on certain streets that we lowered the speed limit by three or four or five miles an hour, and I have documentation, documentation on other streets saying that it didn't do it very good. And one of the requirements we have when we do install is that there has to be at least four hundred foot straight, straight road in front of them for the cars to activate them appropriately. And on a curvy road, that's very difficult to do. And we've installed them on curvy roads and cars going for the other direction block out the, the unit and so is not recording proper. So we have all these different things we want to look at. And this requirement for smart sign came about a long time ago from the people in the area, and I could appreciate your concern. And, uh, I was agreeing, in agreement with it at the time. But the more I look at it, I don't know if it's going to help. And if it doesn't help, it's going to be a maintenance issue on my, my part for, for it forever, and it would be useless. So to say that, uh, we, we feel it's necessary right now is very difficult to say. I want to do something that actually works. And what I've been doing around the island is I have a lot of tools in my toolbox to make, to try to deal with the traffic, and smart signs is just one of them. I'm not saying what the solution is. My experience with traffic here is that if you're driving a car, you don't want to go slower than thirty-five miles an hour, and if you're a pedestrian, you don't want anybody going faster than fifteen miles an hour. So we have a big gap in perception of what the speed should be. I would, at this point in time, suggest we do not put them in until the road is done, but still be able to keep the developer on the hook as if we feel is needed afterwards to have them put in. That way it would be appropriate. It would be addressing the appropriate situation, but right now there's an improvement in this area, and I don't know if that's going to speed up the cars or slow them down. And I don't, I won't know that until after it's opened up, the traffic is traveling on it, and we do some, uh, some street tests and, and counts to determine just what is happening. So I didn't give you a good, positive answer, but I give an explanation.
That was helpful. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Thiel again? Any questions for the director? Thank you. Guess I'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Henkel.
I move we enter executive session.
Second. It's been a motion by Mr. Henkel to move to executive session, seconded by Commissioner Ishibashi. Can we get on that? All in favor? Aye. Anyone vote? Okay. We're going to enter executive. At this time, I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners for a motion on, uh, item number six.
I'd like to make a motion on item six. Make a motion that the planning commission authorized the planning director to take immediate action to enforce the conditions of permit within the authority granted in the zoning code and planning department rule nine.
Sir.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Isato for, is that a, for approval? About a little bit? Yes. And a second by Mr. Henkel. Any discussion?
I'd like to give some clarification on, uh, the motion now is that the, that we authorize the planning director to take immediate action to enforce the conditions of permit within the authority granted in the zoning code and planning department rule, is that the extent of it?
Commissioner Isato?
Yeah. Item. I think we should probably also add into that, this is just my, my, on this, that we also instruct the planning department to assess administrative fines pursuant to planning department rule nine, section nine dash five. So I guess that's a motion to modify yours.
Is that going to be okay with you, ma'am?
No, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um.
Hold on, hold on one second.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Now it's afternoon, so I can officially say good afternoon. I think one of the, one of the concerns the planning director had is that, um, for this specific violation, there, you'll be adding that language that, um, the planning department has authority pursuant to rule nine to assess the fees. What we'd like to see is, um, additional language that says for the possibility of additional violations in the future where we can assess the same type of penalty. So I'm therefore requesting maybe the motion include language that, um, any future violations shall be, if, if and or when there's any future violations, then pursuant to, you know, the conditions of the use permits, the planning department would have the authority to assess administrative fees pursuant to rule nine.
I'd like to make a motion to include that language for future violations.
I agree. All right. Did you read that all back, boss?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that I understand what the commission is asking the department to do. So our recommendation, um, specifically addressed three different conditions of the permit. One was the complaint relating to landscaping. One was the complaint relating to vertical construction, and one was the complaint relating to installation of smart signs. So the department would need to know whether you agree with the findings, and if so, does that mean you're authorizing the department to take whatever action it deems reasonable for each of these complaints? Or is the recommendation speaking to one specific complaint, like condition eight?
Uh, number, the smart signs, we're gonna, that was, uh, intended to be left up to the discretion of the department.
Okay, so the commission would like to leave that condition as is? Okay. And condition four and condition eight, you want to give the director discretion to take action which may, which will improve the assessment of fines?
Yes, in any future violations.
And then add the condition that allows the director to take action on future violations?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah.
All right. With that, I'll take the roll. Uh, Commissioner Isato?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hae Kulani?
Aye.
Commissioner Ishibashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Moses?
Aye.
Commissioner Ono?
Aye.
And Chair Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes seven zero.
Okay, item number seven, now we, we did the presentation for both of them at the same time, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just going to have refer a motion on number seven.
I'd like to make a motion. Make a motion for approval of the amendment for use permit number one, two, dash, zero, 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 three, four. Amendment, twelve, dash, zero, three, four.
Second.
Any discussion, commissioners?
I'd just like to comment that, um, I'm supporting this amendment of reservations because I think the developers have put us in a position of jeopardizing jobs around the island, which I personally don't want to do or have a choice, but with the, uh, item number six that we just passed, I hope that the planning director will, uh, take action. Yeah, that's just my personal opinion.
I agree. Any other discussion?
Okay, uh, the motion is to approve the amendment to special twelve, dash, zero, three, four, as recommended by the director. Commissioner Isato?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkel?
Aye.
Commissioner Hae Kulani?
No.
Commissioner Ishibashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Moses?
No.
Commissioner Ono?
No.
And Chair Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to amend the permit passes four zero. I'm sorry, four, three.
Okay. Moving on, uh, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of March sixth, two thousand fourteen. Anybody? Anybody with their minutes from last one? Stay by, I'll do it. But there's, anyone a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for, uh, March sixth, two thousand fourteen.
Second. Thank you both. Everyone, fifth, aye? Anyone to vote? Okay, next great amendment, Mr. Wright.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. My apologies, uh, I don't have anything for you as far as matters that are really, that you backed upon personally before the county council. However, I put up the U.S. status of, uh, the connection's public charter school contingency proceedings. As I mentioned to you previously, uh, the hearing itself has concluded. Right now, the hearing officer is in process of preparing her draft, uh, findings of that conclusions of law and recommendations that will be offered to the planning commission. We're hoping that the recommendation, uh, will be submitted sometime next week, uh, to all of the parties, at which time they will afford the opportunity for the parties to provide their exceptions, uh, and all of that material will then be provided to the planning commission in, uh, in, uh, prior to the May first hearing of this, uh, of this matter. So again, um, looking forward to your May hearing, it's going to be a full day of hearings. You probably have something close to maybe nine separate items scheduled, so plan, plan on along the, especially knowing that connections will be scheduled, uh, for May first. Uh, with that, I have nothing more to offer.
I, I have a question. Uh, there's been talk in the county council about an alternate building code. Does the planning department have a position or opinion on, on that? And what, did it update us on the status of that?
I'm sorry, I'm not aware of an alternative building code. I recall there are things floating out in the legislature that would look at things like, um, trying to remember the name, uh, sustainable, anyway, there's, they're built in the legislature, but I don't know the exact status of it.
Yes, well, I, it was, uh, an idea that they don't turn, went to the county council. And I just, you know, I heard about it, now I haven't heard about it.
I'm, we're not aware of it, sorry, Mark.
Any other matters? I'd like to ask for a motion during the meeting. So. Second?
All in favor? Aye. Vote.
We don't listen to you when you move.